I see when I came in today that I missed the opioid settlement webinar last week, but they have it recorded. So I will listen to that. Kyle and I attended, or I attended to start out with him and Kyle. I shouldn't say should, but then Kyle was there. I would, and I think that they didn't probably intend for us to go to the safety meeting, but I thought I'm just gonna go check this out down at the county shop. So I went down and they had a guy from Northern Natural Gas and then they had someone, Michael Eggers from WhipCo and a young man from officer from motor vehicle enforcement, all very interesting, the natural gas fellow just kinda gave them some clues on what to look out for when they're out there on those roads and if you see dead areas around where they've got their markings and stuff, please let them know. WhipCo, the usual watching out for the power lines and motor vehicle enforcement, he talked about like weight limits. Um, oh, and he talked about security laws, which I found interesting, so they had that. And then Kyle and I talked briefly to a couple of young men from the secondary road department about the, the ten hour days, forty hour weeks and
Was that a four or yes person?
Uh, well, the two people that we talked, well, on that list, I don't know if you remember what that list looked like, but there were probably, I think I counted, I counted right, I think there were twenty-four people on the list. And most of, three quarters of them had voted yes, there were six of them that voted no. But and Paul sat here and he did say last, uh, last Tuesday when we talked about it, those six, if they weren't there, they marked them as apparent, or he said they could possibly, the ones that were no could possibly be people at the meeting they didn't know about. So in talking with these young gentlemen, they're like, well, no, we know that this, you know, three, three of the people that were on that list were like, they weren't at that meeting even vote. And they said, we can assure you that they would be in favor of that. I talked to one person down there after we talked and I had one person say, no, they didn't want to do it, but other than that. And that, and that wasn't somebody that worked directly on the, the roads themselves.
Cause that was all said, all or nothing.
Another capacity.
One holdout, does that mean it wouldn't go?
Cause he said I don't, I don't think it should, I guess my thought is I think it should be majority rule.
Yeah, I think Jerry and I gave them the green light to proceed with it.
We felt that everybody in
Oh, I, I, it makes sense.
I was happy once we're, once I found out we'll always have somebody in five days a week in the courthouse, I was pretty
Yeah, no.
Maybe you were talking to, I don't know for sure, but it sounded like they would, in my eyes could be, they're under Paul's reign anyway, so I mean, they're not affected by any union contract, so they would be available to work Friday anyway if they so choose.
But I do appreciate the fact that Paul brings that to us, so many people out in the general public ask us how that's gonna work.
One that we have One of the things they One of the things they talk about is this is not something new to county road
No, it's not.
And they said, there's other people around it that have
Yep.
Tried it and all that, and basically it was like, can you please just let us try it? And if we try it and find out it doesn't work, I think they'd be
This is strictly for a summer move.
Right, exactly.
Called Labor Day Memorial.
So that was
Sure, even when I was done at ISAC last year and we were talking about ten hour days, you know, in the courthouse, because at that time that was actually going on and um, they're like, well, we have it with our secondary roads, but with, how would that ever work in the courthouse kind of a deal? So I know that that's not a new thing on secondary roads.
No, they, they would just, would really like to give it a try. I said, yeah, I, I personally think it's a good idea.
I see where team Ford's got it on the radio that there, one of the benefits is you have four hour
Four day, four day work week.
Well, I thought I got in the, that kind of dawn hit me.
If they're hourly, you can understand.
On the radio, I thought, that's kind of a benefit that you don't have to offer, you know?
That's
I know that guys were talking that letters about changing vacation. I said, oh, I said to the guys, I says, if you do that, you just gain twelve days vacation in my eyes. Three, three months, four weeks, four days off of a month. It's like, I mean, those are things that moving forward, we might have to look into enticing our employees workplace without raises.
Right.
Just some different options, so I
The only reason it gets complicated inside this building is we have four hours that the citizens who pay for this
Right, have to be filled.
Expect to be taken care of and, you know, if you're having a hard time getting the line through when you have four staff on a Tuesday and then on Tuesday only have three, because that, that's still
Isn't, and Sherry, for her come, doing this, isn't she doing this year round?
She was, she, that was a temporary thing that she has tried, I don't
For a couple of months, but I know in September, because they're busy with taxes, then she went back to the, the five day, you know, already working five days a week. Now what she'll do after that, I don't know.
That's what I said, but when, when are you gonna do it?
Well, but the other You don't want the other departments, you know, you got a department of three and you wanna start doing that and then, you know, three days a week, there's only two, and there's certain things in some of these departments that have timely, you know, effects to them, if you only have two people there and that person that usually does that particular job. But then it doesn't seem fair that people across the way can and we can't, you know, so then we just start this.
Life ain't fair, my neighbors are
I, I signed the document, the day I was born, it said life will be fair, so I don't know about the rest.
You know, it works in secondary roads, it can work, I mean, the sheriff department, they run a different schedule than the rest of the county. Lambs generally run kind of a different, they run a schedule that works for them out there.
That's next every time of the year, hell, you could be out there middle of the night pushing shit, you know, anyway.
So Jerry, we told them, just plan on trying it next year.
Right, right, right.
Run, run three months and
And I don't think, I don't think that they're even asking anything beyond that three month period, it's just like those three months, daylight, we got a lot of it, we get more done, I, you know, one of the
Less travel time.
Exactly, right there, where the kids say, one of them said, you know, if you have a construction job or whatever, you're driving out to that. And then it's, you've got like a half hour or whatever to get out there and then it's
These days starts in Manila, or it's last week and you gotta drive to Manila, it's forty-five minutes one way and then forty-five minutes back, so you're losing hour and a half.
I'll be interested.
It's in travel time.
Exactly, so
Well, and it's also one day that our equipment isn't leaving down here and driving over to wherever they're doing bridge or grading work and so that's, that's one less day, I mean, they still will work the same number of hours, so the equipment's working, but traveling to and from sites, you know?
They were under the understanding, the ground will all, it'll be five days a week and if there's any emergency work, it's still there, so.
That's what I know.
I don't have trouble with that.
Eric? No, I
Nope, I had third judicial this last week, that was it, and then just our ZEP meeting up there, so.
Okay.
Kai? Well, Gene left me the long meeting.
Oh, you gotta condense it too or not?
It takes about ten minutes to have our early childhood.
Oh.
Uh, imagination station, whatever.
Forgot to talk about that, sorry.
That's so, that's how long it lasts, anyway, uh, usually, you know, cause we look over all the stuff in the minutes or this, they email us. So we, I mean, get all the numbers down before, but bid for flooring, supposedly be late December, the stuff's on back order. The, the flooring, seven grand for that, and then the Feld Security is putting indoor systems so that they can lock down the event of, you know, child predators, whatever you wanna talk about. Anyway, uh, ten thousand dollars to secure the entrances, and we thought that was probably a solid idea. Anyway, so all those things are happening.
Where's this happening at?
Down at the childhood develop, early childhood development. Down there by Washington.
They just fixed those doors here about two years ago.
They get a lot of work there.
I don't think they, I don't think they had, I don't think they had a solid lock system, Eric's actually found, you know, some stuff for the belt and all that, I mean, he actually helps quite a bit down there.
Fell?
Who's that?
Fell, fell fire.
What is it, Eric, I'm like, Eric?
Oh, no, no, sorry.
They're not afraid to charge.
But yeah, well, nobody's afraid to charge, but anyways, so that was pretty much, I mean, if you're five minutes late for that meeting, you, you gotta get a briefing on what happened. But, uh, the, uh, that's pretty much all the meaty stuff from that, otherwise it was just going over the numbers and stuff, if anybody'd like to see that, just send an email, Eric, I can show it to you. Other thing that I did, I mean, I had a busy week, but it was mostly other stuff. I didn't get to make secondary road meeting, cause I had a doctor's appointment, but anyway, uh, we also, that pipeline meeting on last Tuesday night, I went to that. And it was a, a safety meeting in that regard as well, I got a lot of, I got some stuff here where they gave, it was a training meeting, it really wasn't to update you on anything though, though, and you guys got the email day, though, I did talk to the summit people and they told me at that meeting that they were seventy-five percent of the land in Crawford County had been acquired, I guess.
They sent emails now. Seventy-five percent of
Yeah, they sent an email yesterday or something like
Saying that they wouldn't be able to be
Seventy-five percent of mileage.
The land.
A mile.
Mileage.
The one big farmer with a lot of land, that could be one person.
And I think that, but I think that, just by snooping around for, with some of the folks that work in Des Moines.
Yeah.
Year, several years back, how many that, that entails, I have no idea, but there was actually already legislation done about eminent domain and the, these type of pipelines. And it's already okay
Yep.
In legislation.
I think it was an agent. So you can't fight city hall?
Yeah, very, pretty much, and, uh, but I, I, but I think that there is, in, in, I think they had to meet a standard in order to give everybody fair play, as much as possible anyway, that, that they had to go out and show good effort and I suspect I haven't read the legislation. But, uh, they have to go out and give good effort on acquiring the ground voluntarily. And I think there's probably a percentage cutoff, or otherwise, why would they be talking about these numbers?
Right.
So I think that's their objective here, I think seventy-five percent is probably gonna give them Crawford County. Yeah, and, uh, I think that's also gonna speak volumes to our, let's, what we do for ordinances.
Correct.
Because just like with the wind towers, they've already invested, umpteen doll, you know, however many dollars, umpteen, we'll just use that number. They've, they've invested that much in Crawford County already, so, um, I think we'd have trouble putting an ordinance in now. That wouldn't be some voluntary stuff on their behalf to help maneuver stuff around, they'll keep it out of development zones. And I'm, I'd like to know where stuff is, cause if it runs through where we thought there should be the, the, here's only, the biggest concern, it's like all, the biggest concern I've got now is it's running so close to Denison and it's on our west side, which is where we've had some potential development stuff. And I brought this up at the CDC meeting too, I think this is something that we need to be looking at and working with them so that they're not encroaching some, cause first of all, you can't build anything over top of that, hell, they don't want you to plant trees over top, but they sure don't want you to build a building over top of it. So would this encroach anything where we're wanting to do something? I don't know, I mean, there's some things that are further to the west, they're more to the south of town, that, that were areas that were considered, and I don't know that we, we've got anything, but
Refresh my memory, is this line, are they trying to put it in between like the city of Denison and the carbonics plant? Or is it on the opposite side of it, is it between the carbonics plant and Arians?
See, the only maps that we've seen were projected places and I can't remember if that, cause so we don't have any factual map. But because I do know one person that's involved and his ground is closer to Denison, I think.
Yeah, I just
For Denison is the airport, how close does it run to the airport?
Cause that's what my dad
Because if they ever wanted an expansion, plus you
They got expansion.
They're always out there surveying.
So
Going south, I'm guessing, so somewhere in there, I know Bruce Boyden signed up, so it's gotta be in that area, but it probably jogs down towards Denison through there somewhere.
Does, it doesn't run like a straight line, it couldn't
No, I, this, these things turn into A hard beat.
I would hope they could do that on the people who landed, that doesn't want it on there, they can jog around them.
They're giving some of them their fault, I did, they're giving some of their
I did ask the Northern
See, I mean, if you look, it's, it's running awfully, I mean, when you think of, like, if the gray is the city limits, I mean, it's borderline on some ground that, that was projected, possible development ground for Denison.
Now, Eric's
Projected, so maybe we're
These are the people that are
With your past history with the DMU, is, is there an established utility kind of corridor that cuts through there or not? Cause you, I've heard, remember you talking about that one time?
It goes out as far as half of the building on Peterson's ground.
Okay.
All right. All right, and then that's just south of where, what's her name, that, uh, Quod. Is right there, that's on that side, if you wanna go on the other side.
It might be far enough out.
These, the, the lines are all set.
That's what I thought, so I mean, we're trying to fight with something that we, that's already been established by the feds.
Harrison County has
That's what I'm just
Harrison County has, uh, uh, what, west side. They actually serviced IDP and not Denison, not NIPCO.
Comes as far as
On both sides.
No, no, I mean, it's, it's obviously, this sparks dialogue, you know, I mean, it's some and they got We've got some concerns, you know, I mean, that my, I, you know, I've never really been against the pipeline, I've just been against some of the aspects of the pipeline, how's that? And, you know, whether it was the eminent domain, you know, and I mean, if they're given fair value, and I used to get a, a lot of calls from a couple of people. And I get no, no longer get calls from them and, uh, I, I, exactly, that's my suspicion. So they got what they were after, so I mean, if these guys are working fair with them, I mean, no, the only, my, my biggest concern that remains then is the safety aspect and the imposition of commercial development or even residential, any kind of
He would tell you, you need to wait to talk about that till ten
Yeah, probably.
Oh, okay. Part of this, I guess I did kinda, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, appreciate that, well, anyway, they didn't, this, that meeting wasn't about that, other than they did give me a couple briefs, that's why we got sidetracked. But they, they did give a good, uh, can't, Correx, this outfit that's actually from Kansas, so they've had a lot of training with disasters, tornadoes in particular, uh, came up and gave the, to the, for the fire services, but I wish Greg would have been there. Are you antsy for a spot?
Yeah.
Okay. There was a really good training, uh, if you've been a hazmat, if you've had hazmat training, you know, and I'm, I was a tech, you know, Kyle's, you know, I mean, a lot of this stuff would have just been a good refresher, but the guy early, he put a great presentation on, he was a good instructor, he was an old, uh, I don't know if he was a spook or anything, but I mean, he, uh, CIA, he used to work in that, but he was, he The, uh, but the, sorry, it's just my
It's okay, no, I get it, I get it.
But, uh, he, he did, he was a, uh, he, he, he went over information, you know, he was an, he, he was like a reconnaissance guy, anyway. So he, really, really bright guy, uh, was also a sheriff and worked in for the, I think he might even work for the bureau. But, uh, he's done a lot of stuff and he gave, put on a great course, I'm just trying to give his background, so I mean, he's a very knowledgeable fellow. And he put on, and then, and then there was a tabletop type exercise where they showed the picture of Denison and basically the tornado went through Highway thirty and what we'd all do and I said, well, you pretty much took out all the stuff that we're gonna respond with. You know, as far as getting the, you know, county and stuff, city stuff there to help clean up, and oh, they're all wiped out, so we're screwed, we gotta get it from the other towns, but, but, uh, the, uh, you know, just went over like where you'd put your, your tactical operations center, your talks, we call them, but the, you know, just different things like that. And then how to respond to things, what to do, what not to do, when to call the pipeline people. And, you know, it wasn't just Summit that was there, it was, uh, New Star, yeah, it's a new star, new star, yeah, they get natural gas and, and the, and then the guy I sat with, he was their anhydrous guy, which if you've ever drove into an anhydrous cloud, that's a scary son of a gun. Remember that day out of, by Otters there, I drove up, I was driving out to respond in my car and the cloud was over the highway. I'll just grab air right out of you.
Okay, that faster than a CO2.
Yeah, yeah, and we have that stuff, so. So in any event, that was, uh, was, it was a pretty interesting meeting and hopefully they'll do more in the future and we'll get a little better fireman turnout. Cause even if you do understand all that, but just a nice refresher and it was interesting.
They require
And then it was good food, so that never hurts, right?
Good food.
Something
Good Iowa deal.
Yeah, there you go.
Good meth and a smell.
But anyway, I've got their emergency response manual, I did grab one of them and then this is their training thing, so you guys are welcome to take a look at this stuff.
Can you give them the break?
Yeah, yeah, I will get these, that's a great idea. But, uh, it was, it was pretty, it was, it was worth going to, so, and it didn't sound like that would be the last thing that they'd do, so.
I think we have an annual one with just the LP gas pipeline, there's an annual pipeline safety. Well, there was prior to the pandemic, I don't know if I should say we had one set.
Yeah, that's been a lot So anyway, that's, uh, that was pretty much my week. I mean, busy doing stuff, getting calls about the tower stuff, I guess I could go in about that, Ray.
I just wanna talk about it real quick.
Okay.
Spur off that, do we need to, you know, they gave us some options on the concrete, concrete work or shelters, do we just offer it like Peterson or whoever, Adam or something to
Should we get a bid on that or how do we have, I mean, that would probably
How many dollars is it gonna be, right?
Well, we got, we got the, the four sites.
Could we do
There are gonna be a pad.
People get these pads and two people get them, or I, I just
How many people do we think maybe
Don't you have to consider the cost of the entire project and then RFP that, I think
Especially if, you know, if some, if, if the, if the young man from last week would be involved, if there's an RFP, then there, and there won't be
You wanna be entirely transparent, right? Exactly, and so if you give it two, two and two, you know, two could be cheaper than the other ones, because we didn't really
Right.
It'd probably be easier if one gets the contract.
One does it.
Cause he said like with city center, you can't First of all, yeah, you can't, yeah, you can't pick and pick out different things than not RFP some of it. Sorry, don't get right.
So anyway, that's Well, and that's
Sorry, that's my clear conscience thing.
That's why she sleeps good at night.
Yeah, that's why I don't sleep good. Still trying to say that we waited up six months a year to do the bottom floor and the top floor, it should still be two different projects, but anyway, but we wanna get all our combined paper, it's not, would be But I think it's important that we talk with Ray on that, so we can get that concrete work done while we're doing the other work.
Well, I, the other part of that, go ahead, Jerry.
I did drive by and I did see they're taking down the, the county boys rock, taking down that barn and stuff or whatever at Lances, so I do, I saw that
A nice contention, yeah, that's
I was gonna take pictures and bring them and send them to you or whatever, and I forgot my, my
Okay. Well, that was the other thing I was gonna bring up, I mean, what's his name? Huber?
Oh, Mike, Huber, Mike.
Oh, Mike. Does he say there's two?
Uh, fence? Yeah, we need to, Paul suggested him, that's who he uses. So I mean, is, is, would we need to do any bidding on that, should we just get him, I don't think there's a lot of fence out there.
Turns it off, establishing our property lines and we're, the Dallas city, right?
Yeah.
How many feet of fences are at the Dallas city?
Not that much, but we're gonna get up there, maybe a hundred and fifty feet, if you put in like a barbed wire fence. Like ten, yeah.
Say twenty dollars, we're out to be inflationary.
Yeah, materials and everything, cause you're gonna have braces and some ways, you know, uh, you know, because we gotta go with this, I mean, we're wanting to do it, so we don't have to put a gate on our gate.
For, for four hundred dollars, buy maybe for materials maybe.
Yeah.
Just a ballpark figure.
That's what I'm thinking, I just Some of that nature, I think, just get it done, I think it's imperative for our work. And, and for the contractors coming in too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause we don't need them stringing over and
Last week and I was out there, he, he talked about it, I told him to visit with you, because he said, well, we're adventures here. We, you know, we're talking about him and Ron redoing the fence on the north side too, at the same time, so, so he was okay with the fence, in fact, I think he wants a fence.
Yeah, I'm sure he does, and yeah, and if we do this, then we don't have to worry about somebody leaving a gate open, or we ain't worried about cattle getting into our stuff, you know, I mean, it just, it makes sense. Well, he may have
You can use that for most.
Yeah, there you go.
That's a great idea, Eric.
And we got sprayers. We're gonna round up, all right, but anyway, then the other part of that is, uh, our Ray's been asking about doing site grading, which to me makes no sense, they gotta plant thirty foot of concrete in the ground, they're gonna have all kinds of dirt around there. Any site grade we do now is zero, immaterial, am I wrong?
Yeah, we, we, we were out there, I told them, we, we weren't doing any site grading.
I know you guys, and, and that's the other thing, he asked if they could, and I, and I just said, no, anyway. Uh, but I, I think it's, I think it'd be a waste of our money to site grade when they're gonna basically destroy the site.
Right.
Honestly, they're gonna have equipment there, a skid steer loader, a large skid steer loader.
I mean, just something to move the weeds out of the way, all right, I'll give them that, cause he was worried about pot, like Iowa ditch, down at Lances, it's just hemp, it ain't pot.
Oh.
But, uh, well, let's, let's assume, I don't know, but I'm gonna go with the assumption that nobody's doing anything illegal there.
I agree with you.
Yeah, but the, uh, I mean, just stuff like that, just seemed a little bit ridiculous, Russ, to waste money on.
I mean, I Somebody, cause when we're out there with Torrid, I said, we're not doing site grading, we're just getting access roads and, you know, you, you guys are responsible for that. But it's minor, wherever it's
Would you be like the fence that went right through where the middle of the tower is or at Lances, is that able to pull out? I mean, otherwise, if I have to, I'll drive my damn little forty fifty-two down there and not, or fifty fifty-four, whatever, and I'll pull fence up.
We're, we're there, and that's, you know, that's a ten minute job, uh, but, you know, again, I didn't
Yeah, I get it, but I'm just, I mean, if we have to pay somebody to go do that, it's gonna cost a bunch more than what it's really, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a little frustrated at this point.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's clear that we weren't doing site grading, cause it was mentioned several times by all of those people there that day. And so I would have thought, they would have thought, well, okay, who is doing site grading?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that's kind of a, you know, he's the tower.
Right. Who do they think of that?
You know, that's, that, in my opinion, okay, what a little bit I've been involved in this, lies one hundred percent on Ray's shoulders.
Yeah, I agree.
One hundred percent.
I agree with you.
Yeah, and I can't, I don't understand what
Yeah.
Needs to be graded to build a tower on, they build them on Needs to be graded to build a tower on, build them on side of mountains. I mean, I don't.
I, I don't know.
You don't know what to do because you don't know what each contractor or what the contractor wants at each different site.
When they get in there and start drilling holes and pouring stuff and piling stuff up. I mean, they're going to be moving, they're going to be changing it anyhow.
So I'll, I'll have a long talk with Ray after the meeting. And, and uh, I just wanted to let you guys all know what's being said. So if it comes back that we didn't do this right, or if I didn't get that done.
Have them get some parameters on them pads for them shelters too. So we can get that addressed accordingly.
Yeah. And that, I do, I do think we should keep that local since we can.
Yeah, I think so too.
Instead of asking Saber to do it.
They can, they can do it.
They can, but it wasn't on their bid. And so then it'd be added on, but I think that our locals would probably do it more costly. And they'd probably just use our locals anyway. And then turn around and bill us on top of what they did. So I mean, I think we should.
And if that's the case, if the bid was just for tower direction and site preparation, yeah, my opinion, that should have been thought out for now. But anyhow, yeah, you hire a local contractor, they move in there for two or three hours, they get the site, you know, tell us what you need to do, you level it out. You got a thousand dollars a site or something and you move on. Yeah, yeah. It's just beyond, you know, we, we got to draw the line and say it's somewhere.
Yeah, no, and I'm not asking you.
I know you're, yeah. Uh, but uh, but as far as the fence, okay, so back to the Dallas city site because we're still there. I want to head down there after I get that here. There's that intermediate fence in there. So there's the one that's kind of the boundary fence that's on the east side where we're coming in with the driveway. But then there's the fence that kind of cuts right in the middle of there. Is that the fence you're talking about?
The one that where you can see like there's a fence post drilled in that's raised.
Yeah, that's the center.
That's the center of the tower. And there's a fence that runs right on that. So that's. Yeah. And then we'll have to build a fence behind that. So Kyle and I were actually talking about that. Do we want to just put electric fence? You know, but we want to actually, we want a fence that borders off our property period in the end.
Absolutely. On, on, that's for sure. The other ones, you know, I don't know. But uh, but anyhow, uh, we can take that fence out. That, that fence that goes to the guys there, cause Damon and I were standing there looking at it.
And if he doesn't put any cattle in there this year, we could probably do the fence in next year. And I gotta find in line, I, the only way I can ever contact with him is on the.
Yeah, he actually was there. So, but I gave him, I told him to contact you about fence. And I think I gave you my.
Yeah, I got that.
Fence. And I told Lance that too. I said, that's who I would recommend. He's always in the area down around Dallas city. And he's got a lot of fencing work in the, that area. So trying to pull him off to do that little short stretch might be a little bit tough, but you know.
So we're going to, so here's probably, if the other guys wanting to put any new fence, who'd you say was to the?
Roddy Cankels to the.
So they're going to want to split costs with us putting at least our stretch there.
Uh, that could be why they're wanting to do it. That right hand rule. But anyhow, uh, yeah, there, so.
Okay, thanks. All right. That's all I got.
All right, Paul.
Uh, not much. Almost. You don't have much. So I won't take a lot of your time. We do have one utility. Actually, it's really been kind of an interesting year. We're only on our eleventh permit. I mean, normally by this time of year, we'd be on the fifties, you know, it's just not a lot. We had a lot of fiber going on and I don't know, everybody just kind of. I don't know. There's not many permits, which is okay with me. Um, but uh, and uh, so that's, that's uh, out here on Donnerie Road. The uh, bridge going along slow. I had a visit with Dwayne Murphy and he just, he just kind of decided himself. I mean, they're going to run into liquidated damages. There's no question about it. I mean, there's just, you just can't get help. So um. But you know, I said, well, you know, we don't even really talk about that at this point. We just need to get the project done. But in this environment, I would not feel right about being a good contractor who's been a good partner for liquidated damages. I just don't think that's right. Cause they are working every day, these guys.
But you don't have any farmers being heavily.
Not really, not really. No, there's nobody complaining. And they, they know it's going to have to be done. They know they're, they're happy to hear it. And then, you know, this is what you'd really like to hear is that we know it's going to be an inconvenience. For us this fall, but it'll be good when it's, so that's kind of the, the uh, the disposition there. So. We'll get it done. It's tough, tough for some of these guys. So it's moving along. Uh, great crew. They're just going gangbusters down there on three hundred street. They're probably be done with that next week sometime. Uh, that's the one that we're going to be a level A when we're done and looking real good. Um, the uh, they're going to go from there down to uh, the dome. We're going to do some drainage work down there, uh, maybe this fall yet. Uh, but we're going to take those trees out between our property here, the dome, you know, down by the dome stop, on the column dome stop file. We're going to take those trees out there on there. Kind of clean that site up and try to get it so it drains better. So after they get done with this one, I think they'll move over there and wait for crops to get out. There's no point taking out. Ensure crops. There's point in the game. So we'll just wait till the crops are out where we got to go. And uh, and continue on. Bridge crew there, uh, just got some little odd jobs they're taking care of and then some pavement patching. And then they'll get back on a, on a bridge here probably in two, three weeks. Uh, roadside, moaning, still seeding, going to finish up seeding this week. Got a couple of projects I really kind of wanted to get done. And we're going to put that away for the season too. So, so uh, and then, you know, talking some more about facilities. I'm going to just start working on kind of a master plan for Dennison property here. The vanilla. Shop two needs to be replaced. And so, you know, vanilla and charter oak are two.
Yeah, it's got. Looks a little older. Manellas.
Yeah, yeah. And there's a couple of lots in city bought and cleaned up. Just right to the uh, west of our property. And it'd be nice to buy that, uh, lay it out so we can face the shop, just like last week's nice free bay shop. Put it in there so that it faces the south and.
You're talking about vanilla.
Yeah, yeah.
Faces, yeah.
Faces the south and you know, get a, get a nice building down there. That one's been a little tough since I started, but it was okay. We had some that were worse. So, so you know, that, that, that probably, you know, looking in the next, you know, five year timeframe is probably doable within our budget. The work in the Dennison shop is going to take some creative thinking about how we're going to fund some of that stuff. So, you know, and I haven't had much luck trying to find property, but feelers out, but. You know, there's still hope, but it doesn't hurt to even still just look at what's a master plan going to look like down here. What, you know, how would we, how would we go about it if we stay right where we're at? So, I mean, the site's not terrible. To, you know, it's worked for a long, long time for the county. Uh, but you know, you just step back because if you're going to start investing hundreds of thousands, if not millions into improvements. You know, you gotta wonder is that the best place to build? Well, it's just cut up a lot. Yeah. No. Yeah, yeah. Our operation has, has changed, but uh, but you know, there's no harm in taking a look at what the possibilities are. Yeah. And so, so I've been working on some of that stuff. So. And we got our asphalt plans submitted, uh, or check plans. Um, so I think we're going to try to move forward with that. It looks like we're going to be able to uh. Probably do that. That's the one for M fifty five, north and south of Mayo.
Oh.
So uh, yeah. Looks like we might be able to run with that one. So we'll have next year, twenty twenty three, hopefully that project and the bridge between Charter Hook and Records.
I got, uh, I was posed and I, I said, I have to talk it over with you because I, I think we've had this situation arise before. Two hundred and tenth street between Six Mile Road and K Avenue, we graded that.
Uh, yeah.
Upgrade it to a level A.
Yeah, Craig Hart called and asked me about that a long time ago. And I said, honestly, that's what's happening on three hundred street. Spending almost twenty five thousand dollars for aggregate surfacing on that. Well, you've done it. So.
I think he may be willing to.
Yeah.
Have a talk.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, you, you haven't come in or haven't give me a call and. So we just, it's twenty five thousand a mile. So it's twelve, you know. I mean, that's a ballpark number. It's pretty dark. Good for discussion.
I don't like when we put hog barns in somewhere and we have to churn the dirt and don't the farmer usually pay for that?
Yeah, yeah. And in the past, I mean, they paid for a hundred percent of everything, it's grading and everything. And you know, now we've kind of evolved a little bit where we've been doing so many level B roads, you know. Like Brian Better, he asked, he paid a hundred percent of a half mile. And I told him, I said, well, Brian, uh, kind of here's where we're at today. Kind of evolved. So if you want to do it, we'd probably grade it for you. So that's kind of where we're at. Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
He just hates to see that road. All hard after it, which is true. It's in good shape. This will try to keep it.
It is. Yeah. All of the ones created. Yeah, you know, it's being a drought road. It is really dry. And it's a challenge right now. When you got high volumes of heavy traffic, uh. It's, it's tough. We just, I don't think anybody, even the farmers will complain. It's so dry. You know, it creates field hazards.
Although the beans finally started going through good yesterday. Just locked down.
Yeah, it's done. It's dry. The beach rate.
A lot of green beans.
So, but uh, no, it, so far.
Yeah, see, this is just, yeah. Oh, oh, he said his manager. I think it'd be great to be in there working on stuff.
Me too.
Mechanic can actually maybe get something on. Fridays if nobody else is around breaking stuff.
This quick. That's the.
Right.
Hey, I need this fixed quick. Just uh.
Every, every quick fix is one broken bolt away from a three day project.
I just wanted to touch base. Things I had talked about, concrete of tower side conservation board meeting. Well, I, uh, I think everybody's aware that we had a fatality at one of our county owned properties last Tuesday or Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, somewhere. Unfortunate. We don't know how that all play out yet, but hopefully our conservation director did his due diligence. Took a lot of pictures.
I do have a western role.
Yeah, I know that's not here.
Yeah, ten minutes. I need to take a break before we go into the uh. Oh, I, that wasn't, I'm trying to think of the proper word for it. Long ago to the, the meat of the program. Did you get them?
Is that the green light?
I'm just kind of curious.
I used to have green light. It's all burned out. I got one on the combine and I was by the combine this morning and I forgot to.
That's the new.
This is a little Shelby.
Oh, okay. That's uh.
I got one by somewhere.
It, it makes.
Actually, that got traded out of there.
Things that. Bullet point. Cause this is. I'm there. So we wanted to find out exactly when the pipeline window until the board.
It was what year? And I talked to Steve about it. He said it's.
Well, he came to. So he was going to break, put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Part of your mission is to discuss material of the safety of citizens.
Yeah, yeah, great point.
Eric, do you have that? I'll get a copy for everybody. You want to start talking about?
Good. Oh, you mean it? Up the look, I don't know.
Not until.
Sure you said the thing. October.
It's usually the second Thursday.
Yeah, it'd be the thirteen. Do you have a packet?
Utilities are, are per mile.
It's a.
It's a department of revenue that you turn what's taxable.
Put as a big pot.
Cover raise or determine.
So that's, we have no control, it's a state thing. So this number that's sort of going on, we could probably cut it down.
Why?
See, they can be back.
Good, private, very bad.
See how I asked for a more up to date one. Some of the bullet points that these things. Things that they would have been considered.
They've got. Two miles.
Oh, yeah, I think there's. Please, come on now, let's get your. Proclamation put together here. Operation Green Light.
Green light.
Yeah, uh, Nico sent out with the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers, our National Association, uh, Green Light Hub. So Carrie and I got the idea to put green lights in all the windows of the courthouse for Veterans Week. Cause a green light and then, um. I have a press release saying that I can give you about that and see if we can get people in the community to change their, um, porch lights to green for.
Charter of Student Council.
They did that a few years ago, they did big fundraiser. Get that green light all out and put it in. So.
I wish somebody was doing that again.
We ordered little, we ordered candles, candles, like a green candle for every, for the windows of the courthouse.
That's gonna be pretty.
Yeah.
That will be, give us a good picture.
No, the battery operated on a timer.
Oh, my.
Oh, yeah.
Tell you the truth, this is on your own.
Well, we wanted to put one in the half moon window on the mezzanine, but there's not an outlet up there. So that's when we got the battery operated idea and then we can put them in, they have a little section cut so we can put them in the window. I got enough, I think we have enough, we have like ten, we can do the windows in the front, if we want more, I can order more. We want to do at least these two, I don't know, cause.
A lot of these aren't seen because of the trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, but so it's.
Yeah.
Please go off.
Yeah, but Lisa may be coming by.
We, uh. You know, like the White House, they always put different colors, is that possible?
Teaming glow.
They make those for Christmas. Okay, I got a new thing to live for, thank you. Okay. Jean and I have a project.
You'll illuminate the front of the courthouse and then like our memorial.
That would be nice and then, oh, okay, we can do that.
Perfect.
Now you've done it.
So. That sounds awesome. I would entertain a motion to approve the proclamation supporting Operation Green Light for our veterans.
I'll make that motion, I'll sign it.
The move and second to approve the proclamation. But I'm just gonna read kind of the last part here, be resolved that in. The designation of green light for veterans, county Crawford County hereby declares from October through Veterans Day, it's November eleventh. A time to salute and honor and service and sacrifice for men and women in uniform. Transitioning from active service there for it. Be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light Crawford County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who make. Immeasurable sacrifice to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in the window of their place of business or residence. Motion and second, any further discussion?
Question.
We'll proceed to vote all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Uh, October through Veterans Day.
Oh.
I'm guessing so. All October. That's your Veterans Day. Or as long as you feel it.
Yeah.
Till your batteries.
Just let the.
Your batteries run out.
You're different, you're different color. Ten eighteen. Appointment of Sarah Carlson, the Region Twelve Council of Government, Policy Council.
I'll second that.
The move and seconded, though, term ending is in like two months, right?
Right, and you guys, you do that appointment in your first meeting in January, yeah. It's actually taken over. Who seconded that?
Yeah, sorry.
I did, thank you.
Okay, motion and second to approve, uh, point Sarah Carlson. Somebody contacted her, right?
Yes, yeah, she called me again.
Yeah, all right, perfect.
Oh, Rick's hands waiting for.
Okay, so it sounded like everybody's been contacted, that should be, so any other discussion? You're not, we'll proceed to vote all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Well, we just will discuss starter ten twenty item. Carbon pipeline updates and.
Well, it was brought to our attention that seventy five percent of the mileage to Crawford County, uh, they've signed their easements. So, um, that's. That is, but we've talked about it for quite a while that the county needs to be prepared. We've never been in the, uh, job of stopping it, but what we've been trying to do is protect the citizens of Crawford County. And so as our neighbor, uh, Shelby County has, you know, hired, uh, what we would consider to be. An expert in pipelines to help them make a negotiate a good ordinance that protects all the citizens. I feel that we need to discuss what our concerns are and I think that the concerns that we have is protecting our citizens. We need to be ready, we need to realize that this is a hazardous material and yes, I know we have other hazardous materials going under our county, but this is a new. Type of product going under our city. We need to be ready, we need to have funding in place, we need to have addressed our safety concerns, we need to have an emergency response plan. We need to have our setbacks replaced. Regular setbacks, we can be beat for other pipelines, if it's buried one foot deeper, uh, no setback is needed. Cities can pay attention if they expect to throw industrial park setbacks, et cetera. Our county needs to have a hired certified inspector, the pipeline's gonna pay for it. They also, uh, recommend that we maybe have two because there's gonna be one over five different crews and at some point in time, that's a awful lot for one person to. Keep track of. Um. So that's kind of the, the talking points of what we need to do, uh, what we need to be thinking about and I, I just feel we talked about it just briefly. The safety is really where we're at with it, so, um, I think we need to get something in place that addresses that because at this point in time, our utility board has not signed the permit. But we cannot wait till after they've signed because if we have nothing in place, it's too late. So I really think we need to, uh, make sure that we're doing our best to protect all citizens, even if it's not in your, on your land, there's people surrounding that we need to, to know what's going on. I did pass out math, I'm not sure if that's the most up to date map or not, um, showing that it does come very close. Brad, you know, is this the most updated plan, uh, showing how close it comes, yeah, come on up here, you're our emergency guy. How close it actually comes to the city of Dennis. Is there any concern, well, I'm glad Brad's here also, Brad, have you thought about any of, uh, where this pipeline is going in relation to the city limits of Dennis?
I have not.
I think it's time that we all, but our, when I went to Shelby County, um, ordinance reading, they had a resolution from the city. How to be involved in all of this.
Yeah.
The hospital, um, uh, emergency management needs to kind of, uh, approve of what we're talking about, you know, make sure that we're all on the same page of what we're dealing with. And I, I just don't want to be caught. They decided we have nothing that protects our citizens and that's kind of why we keep bringing it back onto the table.
Then I'll come straight at the town for gas. I can't, it's used to call map from the American Pipeline goes across. And then we have, have gasoline, whatever, but passengers' materials that go through every single road Crawford County. Railroad has lots and lots of stuff like that, I've seen, like Duane can verify too, we've seen nuclear stuff go through on the railroad. Three, three, uh, derailments, right, based, uh, right down by the old D and U plant, in what, ten years? That three, three derailments there, the last one was really close, that all the hazardous materials were behind, on the track. So there are, there are railroads that go through that have hazardous materials, we got, I think Eric has the, the map. There's at least two major pipelines, maybe three that go through Crawford County. The three down below, I think is up, down, third down to the bottom southeast, by Aston Wallace is, uh, Enrons. And then we have Enrons that comes up in this other part of Dennis. That, that services Dennis also now city, I think you guys sound like hills, don't you? And then I, where it goes from there, I'm not sure, cause I know services like you and some other communities also. That MapCo one that we talked about with you guys, ladies were here. That comes in from Ogden and goes over to Panawhat. Every, every major highway has, has tankers that go through. Railroads, obviously, every railroad has had some stuff that goes, goes to.
That being said, I mean, we obviously. And like are not new to. And every, everybody. Never the way hazardous materials move.
Everybody tells me, uh, tells the fire chiefs, like for the, the MapCo one or whatever they are now, I'm sorry, I don't know who they are right at the moment, but. But they have to give what's called a tier two report. A tier two report and filed every year, uh, goes to the local fire chiefs of every community, it also goes to me. And then I have to file that in our, in our multi hazard plan, that goes to the state of Iowa, supposed to be in the region seven. So if say, um, the, this pipeline had, um, the carbon dioxide. And I think the ladies have talked about one that was down south that had something else in it, if they put something else in it, they would have to notify me. They would have to notify all the fire chiefs that, that, that serves to let them know that they're putting something else in that pipeline. Jerry, you have a.
Something that just came to mind is I listened to the Northern National Gentlemen's talk at a safety meeting the other day. And he was talking about like a clog in that or some kind of a lock or something in that pipe and how they would force that through. My question is if they had something like that, would they have to notify you that they're gonna do that?
Yes, they're gonna do it.
Put more pressure through.
They let me know and then, uh, there are, there are shut offs, at least on the one up north, every ten miles. And then there are, there are shut offs for, like when they, when the power went off, it was last year for, uh, in, in Dennis during the winter.
Yes.
That created a huge issue for, for, uh, Enron. Because they were pushing, they were pushing gas and they kept pushing more and more and more and we had no power to use that gas. So they were, they had to, had to slow their, their pipeline down so that, so that it wouldn't go.
Right.
Try to lighten all of them in Dennis.
Which really like our new pipeline now wouldn't affect them.
No.
Yeah.
No, is she, are you with the pipeline or?
Let's, uh, stay up.
How many miles do you guys go with shut off?
The regulations are done with every twenty miles.
Now.
So you can say the shut off valves, the main line valves will be less than twenty miles.
And it's all automatic.
That's right.
And then you fly. Yeah.
And the operations center will be in Ames, Iowa for the, uh, some of the solutions.
Yeah, I think the gal was here the last time, explained pretty much most of that stuff.
Well, I think it's important that we bring up that. Kind of like with the wind turbines and we realized that we had some zoning deficiencies. I mean, there wasn't anything that had ever been brought up before, or whatever the reason was that we didn't have things. I think that's probably Gene and some of our biggest concern at this point is, um, we realize that we have. Little to no zoning, you know, basically to make sure that, uh, we're getting everybody informed, all the things go along with why we do zoning. Um, I don't think we've created any absolutes in our discussions, everything is negotiable. And, uh, as we're looking at it, we're, we're really just kind of getting started anyway. But I think these are some things that are important, I don't know if we'll have to do any things like what we did with Scout Energy, but we, uh.
Well, how far away from, uh, city limits do, uh, do we have anything in place?
Yeah.
Martin, do we, do we have any, uh, setbacks in place at this time?
I mean, most of our, like, like with the.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, gas might right up there.
Yeah, you can't, um. You can't regulate egg buildings. Yeah. So you can't put egg buildings via the animal confinement or whatever, you know, within the fourteen hundred feet or whatever it is, um, you know, from corporate limits.
Okay.
Yep, so, and then wind towers, um, are just the distance requirement, I think, what is it, a thousand plus the, um. Or what it is now. Yeah, yeah.
But we had to put that in place.
Yes.
Back then, so. I guess my question is.
For a pipeline, there would be, there would not be any specified because, you know, well, you have. The northern pipeline comes right into Dennis and helped actually to, you know, it's high pressure all the way up to the corner.
Broadway Elementary.
But you have to have, you know, how else are you gonna get gas service for three thousand houses?
That's where the, they put the.
Is this the most up to date map for us? That's a good question.
A year ago. All right. To to facilitate this, I just want to encourage everybody that when one person is talking, we kind of keep the. Keep the side talk to to speed this up, right? I sent a copy of this to our zoning. Commissioner or whatever yesterday and I I wanted to. Hear his opinion on it. So Duane, I mean. This is just obviously just a draft from Shelby County. What's your thoughts?
And you know, it's, I guess, like any proposed ordinance, you know, it'd have to be cleaned up some naturally, but. You know, there's nothing in there that's probably out of the ordinary. You know, there's some. I did notice there were some things in there that probably don't need to be in there. Talks about previous incidents and things like that. In different states and so why would you put that in a corporate county ordinance? You know, something that happened in. You know, wherever Arkansas or wherever. You know, it's extremely wordy, but there's probably a reason for that. I don't know. I like things that are concise and to the point. So when somebody comes in and says, can I do this? Here's the section that controls it and you know, this kind of gives. Some worry. It also seems, you know, to be. Only. Pertaining to. You know, and I think in specific, it talks about. Didn't it say somewhere here that? Concerning the.
I think section eight point four and eight point four one is kind of the key. The minimum separation distance to have.
Yeah, I think it actually said there's. Or some pipeline or something somewhere. Well, that's what I thought. You know, the multi hazard plan to have.
Really just talks about hazardous liquid.
And and maybe just where they were referring to is application with the I U V.
Blast zone. It could just be that one. I think in general, they do speak of all hazardous materials. I think. Where I am kind of concerned is how close they are to schools, nursing homes, lawn care, care facilities. City limits and we had a map here last week that that shows what our map would look like if we did have a two mile.
Oh, that was the wind turbine.
We did that same thing. That's what it would look like.
That was the one you for, Duane, you you made up a map for.
So like on the about the third P or fourth P down. So it's like between the landlord and the pipeline at the top. Very first sentence go down about two paragraphs. There about summit carpet solutions, you know, and I guess. Is that? I wouldn't want to lay in on legally, but you know, is that really something we would want in a.
I guess this, I'm not no legal scholar, but. This would not like them pertaining to them. So if Northern Natural Gas want to flow on through, we'd have to. We do a whole new ordinance just for them. So yeah, I obviously need some clean of that.
Well.
Are we talking two miles from the center of the incorporated areas or? I mean, with the summit carbon solutions, they're most likely you want it to connect to most. Ethanol plants and most ethanol plants are well within two miles of each community that they are at. I mean, so. By saying that, we might, if we if we limit, if we extend it two miles, we might just be saying, you know what, Crawford County's closed the business.
Well.
And I I don't, there's some concerns that I have.
Shelby County didn't have one, so they weren't concerned. Dennison, Crawford County happens to have one very close to the city limits and. We just need to see what we can do, you know, are they trying to go right parallel through that pile, do you know, or are they?
According to that.
Where is in the city limits?
Yeah.
And you know, they're along the westerly edge of that.
Brad, do you know how close that goes to the airport? That that seems to be one of the concerns a lot of folks have is how close.
You have that two mile map that we.
I didn't bring it. I have a lot of people.
But you can see, you know, if you go two miles from the airport, you're almost there. Well, there's a lot of power line that moves more south on the east side of the. Continental Carbonics. Then there is existing high line easement along that. I'm not sure if that's a. Section line easement or quarter quarter reason, but I know it follows that fence line. Landowners on both sides.
That's right along here. The new line? The that new line they put in there that I think was that.
But you know, like in them instances though, I mean. All of our zoning stuff is subject to variances and what have you. And I mean, and. And maybe you even write something into there if it if it's actually connecting a business or. You know, in the case of natural gas, maybe you got to figure out some way to word that in that, yeah. You know, if it, but that's, that's official public utility at that point, isn't it? Well, as. All hazardous lines of any type, or are we, you know, just qualifying this as for profits or, you know, I mean. You see what I'm saying? That we gotta probably, I know Duane likes to keep it concise, but. Martha, can you answer if the I U B goes ahead and grants? Summit Carbon Solutions that. Lack of better, to be deemed a utility. I mean, are we, are we throwing a lot of time and effort at this to be trumped by the utility?
Yes and no. The fact that they have filed their petition with the I U B. There's, there's not so much an argument as to whether they're a utility or not because they're. They've been defined as within the jurisdiction of the I U B. So at this point, it's determined what parcels they're looking at eminent domain for. So. Last, I think it was Friday that I was emailing with Terry about the designation of county inspector. There was already an updated exhibit H saying of our previous list of properties that were looking at eminent domain. We can now take these several off the list because they've reached an agreement. And I would anticipate that that would. Continue to be modified because they they post the map and then they list out the parcels. So there's, there's always zoning that zoning options that the board can look at. Whether it's for wind, I know the board is talking about solar pipelines. There, you know, there are some more aggressive zoning measures that. Potentially lead to some problems for the county. And to remember back to when. There were some towns that didn't want the KFOs, the livestock, so they would try to. Do aggressive zoning to keep that out, only deter running it sued by the companies to say, hey, we can't quite do that. So it's just more the board figuring out sort of what direction the board wants to take.
Just trying to. With us all together, we come with an aggressive zoning or we just. Kind of setting ourselves up to spend a lot more time in a hot seat than anybody's want to be through lawsuits and stuff. Due to the nature that they are.
It would be nonsensical to do zoning after the fact. So if you're going to do something now would be the the better opportunity. You know, we can definitely call it and I can rework the Shelby. And bring it to the board and the board can say, yeah, we're looking in this direction or no, we'd like to go in a different direction. We can definitely do that.
Is there a way you can work? I just, there's a lot of. Stuff in there that I also thought that. So.
It's a big one.
And I would, I would also like to make sure that we do have the exception for the variance, like. Let's just say that Anderson's did expand and obviously continental carbon, carbonics is probably maxed out. Or at least I guess they could expand too, I guess. But and they needed to hook into this pipe. I'd, I'd like to be able to make sure that isn't overly complicated as long as the, the biggest concerns I have is like. Primary residence setbacks, schools. I really don't want to, you know, I really want to look at and 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 even the pipeline should be concerned with it to some degree, I mean, as far as. Our, our ability to, to our economic and residential development of the communities. I mean, to me, that's important. Dennison, we got a little close, you know, but I still think that just like with the wind turbines. And since they're not there, they probably can give us, you know, when we're, when we're talking, I don't know. Just throw a number a thousand feet from a primary residence foundation. I'm sure they got room that they could work with their farmers to get that yet. So I mean, those types of things. I want to make sure that kind of stuff seems because that's safety and welfare of the community. And I don't think the pipelines will even argue with that.
When, whenever you attempt to regulate through zoning, there's always an appeal process. So it's just the board, do they want the appeals coming to the board before court? Do they want the appeals going to the Board of Adjustment and from the Board of Adjustment to the court? But yes, there, there is always that that variance option, that appeal option.
And we could work something in, like if it's a specific, like this would be a carbon pipeline. So it's hooking to a primary business in our community to find, you know, I mean. Or it doesn't complicate that process for our company or the pipeline as far as I feel, but still doesn't infringe on the safety. Or development opportunities for other, you see where I'm going.
There is, zoning ordinance is at the end of the day are a limited tool, but it's a political decision that the board gets to make of. How much of that tool you want to use. So yes, we can definitely go to work with it.
Monogram food doubles their size, I mean, to double their gas supply. I mean, this here again hazardous material pipeline. So instead of just pinpointing any order. Against. I think it should be somewhat more generic. But you know, keep to basically look after the bill, the. Our residents and our industry that is presently here. I mean, I don't want to stifle their growth either, you know.
Since seventy-five percent of the mileage, not landowners, but mileage have been signed. Is this, their easements are already in place. So that, nothing that we do can affect what agreements they made already with the pipelines, correct?
Okay, so you can always zone. You can always pass something with zoning. If there is an easement in place, it would be the legal question then of. Which which trumps is it the legal, is it the easement or is it the zoning? And for many of the situations and depending on how what your zoning language is, the language of the easement. That preexisting easement may may ultimately win. But again, it it's in the language itself. I mean, people are allowed to make. Poor choices or stellar choices and that doesn't mean that you can't try to protect the citizen and the businesses.
Okay. So that kind of gives direction then on, you know, how we would address that. Don't you think, Kyle?
Yeah, that's a good point, but it's also the other side of that is. Why should we? I don't want to be on the side, I want to be as clear and transparent as possible. We don't want to. Restrict those that have made a knowledgeable and base decision and and agreed to have them zoning or them easing.
That's why I asked the question, how do we address that and how do we make sure that? We're not making big interference in what people have decided they want to do on their own property. In our effort to protect the whole of Crawford County. So that gives you a little bit of a mission on what we can do. I have one more thing that I think we should address and that would be. Our eminent domain, the folks that are on this map that are still. Our adamant when opposed to having someone come across their property. Who determines the value of that property? How do you, how do, how does that all go about? In the takeover, our takeover.
Sure. So it's a constitutional question. You know, you can't have a taking without just compensation. And so typically there, if you look at when Highway twenty expanded to double lanes. There was a question of do you value this farmland as farmland or do you value it as a roadway? There definitely is litigation as to when eminent domain is exercised. Was the fair value paid? Typically, the companies will try to work with the landowner to, okay, this is our dollar amount. Sure, then we're willing to pay that. No, we're not. And then ultimately, if there is no agreement, the company would tender an offer and then the landowner would just take them to court.
List been recommended, it says must appoint compensation board. District judge will draw from a commission of members and they'll determine fair value if condemned. Is that the process that's used for this or is that?
So typically, when eminent domain goes through, the company has was granted the power from the I U B. And they have just proposed orders that they give to the court for review. So. And then most of the time, the judge signs off on those. So it would be, you know, incumbent upon the landowner to proactively take those steps of. If they're challenging the actual eminent domain grant itself or if they're challenging, you know, such as the compensation amount.
So the court, when you say the court, is that a court here in Crawford County?
So for the Crawford County, if eminent domain is granted for any Crawford County parcels, a Crawford County judge or judge.
Okay.
Sitting in Crawford County would sign those, but typically those orders are are prepared and given to the judge. The judge just doesn't. Pick a number out of thin air and.
So I think that's going to be huge in what that takeover is going to mean and now all that's going to go. So but that, that would need to be any place. We don't need to worry about that then, do we?
That's a constitutional area that we should probably stay out of. Because it is specific to each landowner because every parcel by law is is different and has its own unique characteristics.
I know. Yeah. So as far as our inspector, does that need, does the verbiage of that need to be in our ordinance as far or is that something else? Because our concern or my concern that's been brought to me is that if we just have one inspector and they're looking after five different crews. How do we make sure that the inspection process is the most called invasive as it can be? That there is somebody inspecting it to make sure that we have no. Concerns as after it's done.
So part of the petition process with the I U Tony's board is that each county has to designate a county inspector. Just Crawford County has not done that filing, but it's my understanding that the board has already approved their county inspector. And signed an agreement with them. And so. Just a, a letter that is filed with the I U B saying, you know, Sunquist is our inspector. I think Terry and I were emailing back and forth on that. So that will need to be approved. By the board at some point, signed by Kyle and then I can file it with the. with the I U B. As far as how many people are actually inspecting, I would go back to that agreement language with Sunquist, and maybe have Sunquist in here and, you know, express your concerns to them, that, you know, we want to make sure that there's close eyes in the house.
Because the pipeline's paid for it, so we feel more comfortable having two rather than just one person, because when this thing is in full production, it's going to be quite a challenge to make sure that you've inspected, and I would say, every inch.
Are they required to pay for more than one?
That's kind of part of the question.
I guess. That's not in your.
Let's get Sunquist back in here and have a discussion, because they're, because I think they've probably been had their door knocked on by more counties than just us, but maybe they're ramping their workforce up to accommodate this.
Right, and so those are the things, uh, because in this one that, that, uh, Shelby County has, uh, they, they want to, uh, clearly spell out the process of inspections, damages, wells, ty, ty lines, setbacks. Uh, and they want a downed model to take the EMS commission, blast zones, uh, worst case scenarios, things like that, so, um, this is wordy, but I think that we want to make sure we address all of those issues.
I think it's a good idea to have a, a good ordinance, simply because if there was already one in place, we wouldn't even be having this part of the meeting today. And I think that kind of stemmed from, I, we're probably a little more cautious now because of the wind turbine issue we had.
Yes.
And so now we're, we're wanting to just get ahead of this, basically, we'll get the horse back in front of the cart here, and, and make sure that we're at least somewhat looking after the folks in the future, you know, I mean, we're kind of playing from behind the curve right now, but and when, you know, and not to be against business, but we still got to look after every ounce of soil, every drop of water, every blade of grass.
So does that take us to our ten thirty item and find out, uh, if we maybe utilize a consultant? Do you, do you feel like we need one, based on what you see in this ordinance?
Um, I don't know that we necessarily need one for this ordinance, I think it would be really important to reach out to this attorney to make sure that's something that, that he is comfortable doing, and, you know, get a price quote from that person. Um, you know, Dwayne has mentioned, I think Gene had mentioned last week, um, that, um, you know, the zoning structure, um, hasn't been touched since the.
Nineteen seventies.
Um, bits of detail.
Nineteen seventy-six.
Yes, uh, and so when I first started this job, I had talked to Dwayne, I think about some sort of ordinance, that they were just sort of all tacked on the end. Um, and Dwayne can probably clarify this, but I know I asked him about, like, you know, why aren't these just reorganized? I guess that in itself would cost, um, some money, um, and I don't know that the board, um, necessarily wanted to spend that money, because the ordinances or the ordinances, whether you have them nicely organized or not.
How hard would it be to have them nicely organized? Just asking for a friend.
And I don't know, you know, maybe, um, the state, maybe ISAAC has some model.
Okay.
I don't know, I've never, you know.
Call upon the experts to see.
Right, but as far as an attorney on this specific ordinance, um, I would first start with that attorney to say, like, you know, what kind of lead time are you looking at? What kind of dollar amount are you looking at? And if the board wants to spend that money, great, um, what I was hearing from the board before was that, um, Colin and I would take the Shelby ones, kind of regroup them a little bit, and bring them back to the board for, like, a red pen review.
Mm-hmm.
What do you like, what do you not like?
Just consensus here quick, I think that's probably a good place to get people all rolling, but I don't, I don't hesitate contact and, and just seeing, they might flat out say, you know what, we don't have time for this, we're, we're doing, we've already got thirty-five other counties that we're working on.
Or they could just.
Or they say we can cook and cut this.
Yep, they can look that over and say that we didn't, that, some of, something that we maybe took out of theirs was very important that we left in, and, uh, because Crawford has a different land use plan than Shelby does, we may be not able to use some of the verbiage that they used, and we might, you know, he might have something that he could see for Crawford County that would be beneficial that he didn't see in Shelby County. Because it's not a cookie cutter, because we have different land use, uh, programs, and we have different dynamics, especially since we do have a carbon plant in our, uh, county. Makes us a little bit.
How many are there within the area?
Carbonics.
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 I got a little map here.
That's a good question.
I got it.
We got thirty-two across the project, so. That's five states.
My question is, where does it start?
One in Galba.
I think this map has the carbonic plants.
Are you talking carbonic plants or ethanol?
Ethanol.
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 Both.
Ethanol.
I think Galba's got a carbonics plan on it, where they capture CO2.
Right, I don't, I don't know how many continental carbonics, there's all the F word.
I got everything.
The stars, the stars are the ethanol. Yeah, and you know, personally, Kyle, I, I'm, Martha, you've never let us down on anything.
Yeah.
I mean, and you're always looking after our folks, that's my primary concern here. And I, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable, if you, if you feel like it's getting out of your wheelhouse, if we need to do more, I'm awfully comfortable with what you've done for us on ordinance.
I am too, I just think with this being a little bit of a unique thing, if, if you want to call out to an expert, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
You know, if you feel like we'll do it. That would be the.
So I guess, I think that's the direction that the board wants to present to you, is to take this ordinance, adapt it to the Crawford County needs as best you can, and, uh, work with that.
Certainly. Just to address the board, uh, and the.
Introduce, can I have you introduce yourself?
Certainly, I'm Bill Sullivan, I work with a company called Turner Logistics, and I've been working with, uh, Paul and several other members of the department for the last six months or so, in Crawford County, uh, for non-environmental permitting specifically, so that's kind of my wheelhouse, I do non-environmental permitting, but also sometimes will attend these presentations on behalf of Summit Carbon Solutions. So, uh, just a quick ask of the org supervisors is this, while you're considering ordinances for hazardous pipelines and some carbon, or I would ask if there's a possibility that Summit Carbon might be able to provide some input for any possible reviews of ordinances or resolutions? Simply because, what if there were an instance, I know you guys said previously that, you know, you've never been looking to stop the project. If there was an untenable situation for Summit Carbon Solutions, like a setback that's absolutely undoable, it would be really nice if we could address that before it becomes actual, you know, send to paper kind of thing, just a suggestion, members respectfully.
You mean where you would need a, a variance or something, is that true implication?
Um, it's much easier, of course, not to have to need the variance in the first place, so if we were able to, like, say, for example, I'm not a hundred percent familiar with the, uh, ordinance or the set of papers that came out of Shelby County. Um, but there may be some, there may be some setbacks there, for example, that might not be, you know, again, you know, pointing at something like whereby, you know, almost every ethanol plant that I could think of in Iowa is somewhere in some city limits, I'm in Ames, and the Lincoln Way Energy Plant is right there inside the city limits of the city of Beta, for example. So, uh, a setback could be, you know, things we're primarily concerned with would be like an undoable setback, something that you just wouldn't be able to, you know, work with. Um, there are also instances, for example, where a landowner just wants us to avoid a feature, and volunteers says, I'd actually like you to move this line closer to our place residence, and I'll say, I think it's normal, but I have seen it once or twice, whereby, you know, something like that might become a variance or something, but
Yeah.
again, I just would ask that, again, respectfully, Summit, or might be able to provide some input, might help to avoid some misunderstandings.
True, I, 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 I've sat in the zoning meetings, the most recent one, man, and I will tell you that if you'd come up with that particular proposal where you're one, you're, you're, you're okay with moving it closer, and that's, the landowner is okay with it, that's going to scoot through that variance meeting pretty quick.
It's going to be.
And I, I, they're, they're pretty, you know, why would anybody else care if it's moving closer to somebody's primary residence, you know, other than those people? And that board, I was very impressed with the amount of detail that they actually already, before they even showed up at that meeting, everything that they understood about stuff and things of that nature, so I, I don't, you know, in, in, in good interest, I, 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 I think you would get a fair shake, so to speak, and, uh, that, that, I, I wouldn't worry, but you're, as far as your input, I mean, we're, we're always all there, I mean, we're ears for whoever, I mean. I, I, I know, I, I, I'll listen.
Through, through.
They don't mean I like what you have to say, but I'll listen.
I mentioned this, Jerry, you know, through the years, how many times has, has the city of Dennison talked about annexing? You know, and, uh, I know when, I think, when they needed, um, a lot of water out there, the one time they talked about annexing, and, you know, even where the, uh, carbonics plant was, you know, to be in the city limits, so, you know, it really wouldn't be fair to go two miles from a city limit when the city's going to move the city limits, you know?
As well, yes, sir, I, I appreciate you wanting to put input in, but as a county, like, maybe we could be perceived as favoring you if, if we sat and listened to, so I think to work through the variance is probably maybe the most diplomatic way to, you know, I farm, I want to, I want to speak corn, stay valuable as possible. And, but I still sit in this chair, want to make sure we're, we're doing the right things for constituents, and.
But.
I think that's one of the.
Which is reference, I mean, if you're trying to talk to this board and give us a perspective that we might not understand, is that what you're talking about?
It's entirely possible, um.
Yeah, I guess that's what I thought was talking about, so.
Well, maybe I misunderstood or wrong, but, I mean, I think, I, I still think the, the, the system that's in place to request variances and stuff is probably the best.
Yeah.
Best recourse we, we have.
With Martha comes, when you guys have your proposal, you guys are here and we go through it, you know? That's what we do.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Not going to say.
We're always.
Listen.
Sure.
Change for what you think's best for the county, based on what you think's best for your company, you know, I think it's what you're trying to say.
Yeah.
It'll be considered about Crawford County, not just one pipeline.
I did have to speak up to have some regard, we're also extremely concerned about safety, and the residents of Crawford, the counties across Iowa, and the five states across, safety is a number one concern for us, as well as fair negotiations, as is evidence for our, you know, efforts to voluntary action in Crawford County, that effort will continue.
So I guess.
Alright, so I guess the only other thing we need to make sure we talk about is how we deal with our, kind of roads and crossing our roads and things like that.
Yeah. Would that be within.
Within the. Something we'll be looking at closely.
Appreciate all the input and concern, so.
That was a question. I was, I were on, still on the, uh, like, for moisture content and stuff of the soil for worse, that, we can have that in the ordinance, and if that's actually a, a scientific study, then.
I don't know that whether it's a scientific study or not, if that's a, a key ingredient for whether it can or can't be in the ordinance, uh.
And that's what I'm asking, is that something that the farmers should be having in their agreements? You know, if I'm, if we're above whatever percentage of moisture content in the soil, you don't work that day, and then our consultant, our inspectors know that, so that they say, oh, you can't work today. You know, oh, I, I mean, because I know there's that study that's been discussed, you know, and.
Sure, so as far as the actual inspections as the, like, the county designated county inspector, um, you would first need to go back and look at your agreement with Sunquist, um, to, you know, whether it's, you know, an additional agreement you need to make with them, say, hey, we want you guys to pay specific attention to
So.
moisture, yes, or moisture in the soil, you can, but you already have an agreement with them, so just making sure that you're not stepping outside of it, or just doing an additional one. Um, and there's areas like that that you need cover.
But how, how would that get relayed to the, uh, pipeline company that Crawford County, you know, if it rained the night before, you can't come in and dig a pipeline and leave us twelve-inch ruts? Where exactly is that going to be the protection, and how exactly do we make sure that they leave it exactly the way that they found it?
So part of, um, filing your designation of county inspector with the I U B puts
Okay.
the company on notice, because part of that filing is, this is the first team contact, that's their number, and then you can let them know, because you presumably have brought Sunquist in and talked to them, and
Well.
so that they can brief up the company, uh.
That was so early on, and we learned a whole lot more about what to be aware of when we went to ISAAC that.
I think that's why we didn't do it to the I U B yet.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, that might be good idea to talk some.
Just trying to make sure we're staying on target with what it is we need to do and who we need to do it with.
That was my question, thanks.
Alright.
Good.
Thank you, Martha.
That's another whole, I mean, compaction, going through a swamp, person on Gobbo with West Hill or some place you play, it's like.
Mm-hmm.
That's all part of it.
If I may briefly, every land and every property owner has different concerns about things, and things like what you're mentioning, you know, construction stipulations absolutely can be placed in with the easement. And at least on the landowner level, not on the county level necessarily, that goes through an inspector, who incidentally does have the authority and the ability to stop the project and say, this is too wet to work today, you're not working here today.
Yeah.
But going back to the landowner's easement, that easement can contain language with construction stipulations such as compaction, moisture content, and so forth. Uh, I've seen some pretty exacting methods even go into landowner easements that will specify protections and construction stipulations for the landowner. So those things are out there, they're in our toolboxes.
Some talking about the easements, though, so if you suddenly, these easements that have already been signed, so some is willing to go and open them up and put these stipulations in.
I couldn't say that, however.
Because none of them have them in it right now, or you violate my records.
If I might, there will be a lot of, uh, construction standards, we'll have what's called a list of construction standards, and even if it's not an easement, uh, as an example, if we're going like, say, for example, five feet and your easement says four feet, we'll go the five feet anyway, for example. So there will be construction standards that may actually exceed what shows in the easement. And in any event, our construction managers will absolutely go back to landowners that already have easements signed, and discuss with them the conditions for their property and do a very utmost to make sure that that is done the way the landowner wants to be done. Again, all within, you know, construction standards and best construction practices.
And I'd like to, I'd like to bring up that, I mean, obviously, with Summit, I mean, you're, you're, you're the focus now, because you're the one that's coming through, but this is about more than just you guys. I mean, it's future pipelines, I want you to understand, nobody's picking on your air.
Yes, sir.
And, and the fact that you guys are in agriculture business originally, we would hope that you would have us in your, you know, our, our landowners, us being us, uh, as, as important to your, your operation as you would your own properties, you know, so I mean, well, obviously, we're, you know, you, you always want to hope, and, but you always make sure you assure us, you know, so our job is to make sure that things are happening on behalf of the folks at Crawford, but, but, uh, that's, that's why we're asking about the compaction aspect, you know, I mean, if you listen to people that have had pipelines come through, that's, that's the biggest suffrage in the end, is eight years later, they're still having crop loss on that particular stretch, and they, and it's always been attributed to compaction. And that's why, with, when, as people have started doing studies, obviously, you've got the board of supervisors across counties alerted, and now we're checking into things, and, and one of the things that's been found is moisture content of the soil is a big issue. And that makes a big difference on the compaction in the end, you know, so, those are the things, you know, moisture content may not go very deep on a year like this, so you might be, I'd say, but, you know.
It's supposed to last another year, so.
Yeah, see, you've got to hurt, got to hurt her again, anyway.
Have Sue?
Yeah.
So I understand that who's responsible, the inspection, look out for the landlord, it's not in the easement, it would be the inspectors or the ordinance? And how does that?
Well, the inspector will, I mean.
The inspector will, so it would be a contract. That's why I had to ask also, because, uh, they seem to have some, uh.
They'll, they'll look after the interest on behalf of the county, which in general, if we have a proper ordinance and, and greet, and, and their agreements, like, our, our inspectors, if I understand it correctly, please stop me if I'm crazy. Thank you. Our inspectors should actually see everybody's easements, is that right?
Um, and if the easements have been signed and filed with the reporter's office, then they're not one knowledge.
But he should know, I, I, I don't know how he can do his job if he doesn't know what's in the easement.
Exactly.
I mean, so, and to me, I, I, our, our inspectors should for sure know what's, even if he has to sign a non-disclosure agreement, he should actually know everything that's in the easement so that he can protect that landowner's property appropriately. You know, so to me, that's something that's, if that hasn't been addressed, we certainly need to address that. if that hasn't been addressed, we certainly need to address that.
I think that's why we went local with our inspector, because if there's any questions, we want the people involved to have a local person, boots on ground, that's going to be able to help you out.
Right, and, and to Jean's point, too, if they're working around five properties, and everybody has different easements and different, right, um, special condition, they make sure that. And even when we were in ISAC, they would like to have the counties have similar, so that they don't say, oh, we're in Crawford County now, we don't have to put the dirt back the way they, we took it out, it's not written down anyplace, or, you know, so we really wanna make sure that that's uniform throughout the state of Iowa, so that it's not one, we can just leave it the way we found it, and then we also have to talk about decommissioning, I guess.
Exactly, that's why I didn't know if it was an ordinance, if it was zoning, if it was.
We're finding all that out as we go today.
We're working on it. They're going together.
In my opinion, all the, we'd be doing a disservice to our citizens if we had the same soil recommendations as somebody in Green County, because our soils are way different than what they have, and our topography is way different, so I, I, I think it's important that we find the shoe that fits us properly.
We need to be the standard, though, that is.
I'm not saying we need to be a standard for Crawford County, but we can't model it after a Green County or Sack or something, it's just totally, totally different.
Totally, yeah, yeah.
We're unique here, we've got Glacier Till, we've got Les Hills, you know, we, we are unique here, and they're gonna cut right through kind of the joining of the Les Hills and the Glacier Till, so.
And this is a good challenge.
This will be, this is a challenge, with that being said, the spirit of the agenda, I think, Martha, you got direction?
Yep.
Do you need a copy of this?
Jerry provided it.
Okay, and if not, we can email you some more, so. I thank you, everybody, for keeping it so, and moving forward. So Brad, I guess we're a little behind, but I think that.
Later in the meeting, it happens, I'm sorry.
So I brought some more maps, you all should have the resolution, I believe, today updated. Maps, everybody still have a map?
I got it, yeah.
Well, thanks again for having me. Yeah, so, and the reason I wanted to explain definitely what we measured after meeting with you, I went and measured all the distances for all, all the total miles, and then what would be in the county, and what the total was about nine point five miles, the, the county property getting to the city was about two miles, and includes that little hook that goes up a little bit towards Wheel to Hills, both of those, so we're figuring that reason they've written it not to exceed six thousand dollars for your share is based on that two miles out of ten was twenty percent, and there's gonna be a little extra, and the reason being is what if we run over that hundred and twenty thousand maximum planning? We're not assuming that would be much more than that, but it's kind of like a contingency. The only alternative are the other aspect of it, they did look at it and said that we cannot use additional federal funding as a match, so it cannot come from our.
Thank you.
You know, we were gonna try to go with that.
Yes. Have any additional questions?
If the grant's approved.
Seventeen.
Without the grant approved, it's a lot more.
Have you already did some sniffing on, on whether people are interested outside of the limits?
Outside of the limits? No, the reason we wanted to go to country states, because it's targeted for disadvantaged communities, and that would bring them into town without having vehicles, they didn't have that mode of transportation, and not having to walk either in the ditch or.
On the road, sure. Which is a big part of the city.
Right, and we have that in cities in certain spots, where people walk over the highway. That's why we included that one, I don't know of any others, we have noticed another area that might fit, but this is what I'm planning, the grant, if we receive it, we'll really address.
I've got one piece of, no disrespect, Brad, too, it seems like we get asked, coming budget season here in a matter of two months, we get requests made like this all the time, and you get a five hundred dollar request for a Klondike hotel, we can't find a way to put that in our budget. You're zooming away about thirty-five hundred dollars, we're supposed to agree to, and I'm not saying it's not bad, it's not. I just don't, just wanna be more aware of that, you know, thirty-five hundred dollars now, like. Pass it out.
Are you building right away, or as soon as possible, or financially, or? What, this is the planning grant, so that's what just helped us also determine how many phases we should do, what's suggested, and when we should propose to be done, normal, when, I mean, we're also looking at visioning Iowa, I don't know if you heard, we've also received that grant, which would be more about wave signage and beautification of the city, but it also does talk a little bit about walkability, and so I think we're not gonna be able to do this all, if you figure that nine and a half miles, I think I'm gonna be retired by the time it's actually finished, and I plan on being here for at least eleven years, that's my target retirement, so. So I, I know it's not gonna all be done, it may be one or two phases, but that's gonna depend on how we face the art, and that's also gonna depend, just like you, on the city's budget. So I know that the city's pretty much adamant, the council is, again, I can't speak for them, but see, very adamant that I heard, or never, we're not increasing taxes.
Yeah, certainly, that can.
He said, you're working with rotary roads in this?
Yes.
They've, they've gone a long ways to generate.
Yes, with rotary roads, they wanted to have some sort of road that would lead to downtown, but their multiple main road is going from Dennison, basically up to Walleye to connect to the trail up there, and I can't remember the, so.
Stomperial, trail.
And then they just mentioned it would be nice to have some leading to downtown, so when we looked at it, that fits within this, because we want to be able to connect to not only shopping, but to potential jobs, job training, education sites, and recreational, so that just fits perfectly.
We've always talked about connectivity, and how we can connect to, you know, walking paths and biking trails, and anytime you have a grant that's designed to do that, and you're targeting low to moderate income families, and taking them to school and to shopping, it seems to be a project that, you know, as a county, we should be involved in a little bit, you know, we can't expect the city to take care of things that are actually in the company, is that, are you seeing that right?
Is there any, uh, are any of these grants to do with health?
Uh, you know, I don't know.
Have we explored that, because this is obviously for public health as well.
Absolutely, yes, so this, this plan is about reconnectivity, that's what we're focused on, but there are grant, there's more money right now for trails than there used to be, so I mean, there's a possibility that.
Well, I would tell you as a fleet owner, getting people off the shoulder is a good idea, okay, and I mean, we're gonna have to decide on what our, what our investment, what we can afford, after what we want, I mean, I, I, I'd like to connect every town in Crawford, just like they were in Germany, with a bike trail, I mean, people use it if they're there, I mean, it's the Iowa adage, build it, they'll come, I mean, and, and there's the, the, one of my other concerns is the maintenance of this. Subsequently, I mean, is this something, obviously, your people aren't going outside of Dennison, I mean, it's just like we'd have to go on conservation, all would tell us to jump in a creek pretty quick, but.
I gotta go see Paul, so if you want me to tell him that.
Please don't. Anyway, uh, tho- those are my few, there are also some of my concerns with this project, is the continued maintenance, you know, I mean, obviously, bikes, we're, we're, our ground compactions probably not gonna destroy it, but the heaving in the ground happens, whether it's on the highway or the ditch, so I, I would like to see this something like this, but I wanna know more about initial costs and long-term costs.
I guess as far as the resolution today, that'll move forward, I mean, either we pay, commit, be agreed to during, during budget negotiations, the commitment, or, or C, we just say we're not gonna play at all, you know, like, there's probably three options for states, agenda.
And this, and this grant is due October, let's see, fifteen, I think, so thirteen.
And I'm just not just. He ran off.
I was, I just want you to, to know that if I would've known about this sooner, I would've, ever since we started talking about the just announcement just came out, and I went through a webinar about it last month.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just throwing, I was throwing the option out, so.
That makes it easy for me to ease out, and I'm not favorite C, so.
So where's money coming from?
Yeah.
So if we agree to this, where's the money coming from?
We can't, you, she just says we can't do that.
So it might have been the end of last.
Which is, was the thing, is it was a health issue.
It might have been the last one. Yeah, thirty-five hundred dollars for the study. And that moves forward with the study gets put on a shelf somewhere, and.
Project doesn't ever happen.
I'm just, I'm, I'm not, I don't, I don't, I see the value in it, I don't wanna be taken out nuts.
Uh, from rotary roads, uh, point of view, it's not really about the connectivity grant, but based on where, similarly, we have it laid out, nice thing about when we take it down, it didn't stop on the south side of the city, we went to where there's other jobs, potentially, right, so it's the most southern tip for the city, which then could be a connectivity connection now, for that city, uh, same with their statement when we went out to country new states, and we took measurements, basically, it's only from country new states, about five miles to Vale, so I mean, this is a good kickoff point to being able to connect more communities, as what you mentioned, if you get the bottom, from city to city. Uh, so I think that's part, we can also discuss about part of the planning commission, what's the anticipated maintenance, how are we gonna determine that maintenance, are we gonna have to drive, or hopefully have some sort of activity, or app, the way phones are going these days, where someone can report potential lift.
Speaking of that, when you're coming to the country, are you projected to stay within the state right away, or are we gonna do some land acquisition?
That's what we're hoping, we want you to all right, like.
Has the state said we can, you can do that?
We have not asked the state.
There's a lot of what ifs at this point, isn't there?
Till you do the study, how do you know?
And that's all this grant is for, is to do a study?
Yeah.
And you need how much from us then?
Well, I, I had a thirty-four eighty, if we, if we provide the funding for two, the two miles that are rural areas.
Oh, that's wrong. And this has gotta be decided by the fifteenth of this month.
I think it's Saturday. Do you have that resolution there?
So it's supposed to.
Do you have that resolution? Yeah, and that's what the resolution is. With six and fifty mission. Yeah, six thousand is maximum you share, that's because, what if it goes over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
Six thousand, you have no idea how tight. Terry, where can I get that money?
Well, there's no time for a fundraiser.
They can't have a pancake, Pete. No time to get it out.
No.
You got the. Upboard tomorrow. The rains are coming about.
I don't think you're gonna be here, then.
I hope it's muddy tomorrow morning, I doubt it.
I don't know if we can take action, there's just too many what ifs right now today, I think, I don't know, we got, if we wanna contribute, we need to find where we're gonna get the money from. Would we have named, if I need the money to contribute, and so they can, so did we miss the boat on a transfer of funds unless we do it?
Open the budget amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah. Not this one anymore.
You know, how soon do you need the funds, Brad, if we was to.
If we were awarded the grant.
How, and how soon would you know that?
Well, I would have gotten.
It's so hard to commit it, though, or him to do the grant.
The only data I've got is the due date to grant, yes, we don't know how long it'll take.
Can you research that and, because we could have this on the agenda to pass next week, because I mean, if, if it's something that, you know, you wouldn't need the funds, so. Maybe we'd be able to.
December, January.
Yeah, we, we could make it work, Brad, I guess. It just.
Absolutely, no, at least we're having a very thorough discussion, though, and I appreciate the questions.
So I think if we put that on next week's agenda and take action again, and then we'll have some answers for us, and then.
Yeah.
We're almost eight years here, it's not as easy just to write a check.
You write the check, we don't want it to bounce.
Total project, for the, this hundred and twenty, they're looking for a hundred thousand in grant funding, and then.
Yeah, that's twenty thousand, we haven't.
I mean, if they fail to get the grant, the whole project's probably scrapped, the city ain't gonna go.
Yes.
And this would be a bribe and a walker's.
Correct, what they call a shared juice path.
Let us know, give us those answers.
So, and I, you know, the, who's the biggest beneficiary?
Well, I, I think at the beginning, it would probably be, if you're talking about as a whole, the city best.
Yeah. And if we actually decided that we wanted to build it to Dow City, to Vale.
Correct.
Are you guys gonna jump in and help support that?
Inside the county? I, again, I can't speak for council, but.
And you understand where I'm going with this, right? So basically, since you're gonna be the bigger beneficiary, I can get a little bigger bite of that.
I don't know. I think that's always something to be discussed with council if we get the award.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just, the numbers I'm giving you are based on what, right?
That was my question, please take that to your board. He's already listened.
The only part of it we're talking about is this grant, we're not talking about any.
Planning, just planning, no, really.
See if it's feasible.
No.
Might, might come through if they get a, just grant awarded, and the study comes back, might find it unfeasible to build within.
It does, it, it does help a little bit, the owners involved as well. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, alright.
All right, our eleven o'clock item, we're only twenty-eight minutes behind, that's not bad for today's agenda, to tell you the truth, I appreciate that. Remodeling of juvenile probation officer, there he is. We, we never gave up on your proposal, it just kinda got.
No, I appreciate it, and we weren't at any rush at any point, so.
But sooner you can have a office that facilitates your needs, it seems like our juvenile problem is not going anywhere, so.
No, it doesn't seem to be.
I, I, I'm taking a sociology class right now, and boy, does that make me ask a lot of questions about our juveniles.
Yeah, if we had answers, I don't think I'd have that.
What do you got for us?
Well, I'm not sure what was proposed or what was drawn up. I know, I think.
So it was in your package?
Right. Yeah, I'm assuming it's similar to what we were doing.
We went off with that, what you had brought.
Right. He came to the office, Deb was there.
Yep.
They discussed the ins and outs and ups and downs and, yep, and that's thirteen.
It says estimate for the juvenile, the county juvenile room, partition off and fill cabinet room half wall with countertop and swing door. Fill in door opening, cut in door opening and reinstall. Estimated materials and labor come to the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
One eighty. We originally, when? Ten thousand, I think, was it? Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we were ten thousand, I think, and obviously.
I know we put money.
With inflation, I think it's probably.
I talked to Nate this morning. Do we have any, what, did we send them a picture of what we were after or?
Deb drew a picture.
I know she had my, she, well, it's nothing three D like, but it's, it's definitely like, well, I know she had mentioned him and I agree, as we walk into the back of my office, I don't know if you guys walked back there, but there's a portion of that leads up to my door that I thought, where if we're going to cut off, just removing it all the way to the ceiling, because it does block a view that Deb would see to the, the place where the juvenile and the family would be. So we have an idea of who's there. That would just be, in my opinion, like more of a security risk, just making sure, okay, this is who's here. And then, and then the wall that we have that when you first walk in, which is just right next to Deb, button up to the door that's going back to the recorder's office, that, those are the two things that I've noted that if we can do, it'd be great if, if the board approves, of course.
That wasn't in the original.
I thought it was, but I just, we just wanted to clarify. Because I think this was, this was Xed out, and if this was the drawing, I don't know what that meant. If it meant to, to remove it completely, or if it, if it was just to have, make it a.
That's a drawing that we get back from.
My suggestion would be, can we have either Ryan or Steve come back and
Right. Because I think that would, I don't know if it's saving costs.
I just hate to do it in my mind, and then you say, hey, this wasn't what I was thinking about, or what, you know, I just.
Fight the thing.
For me to do it.
But I mean, I, I think really having a look at it, just seeing maybe would be, would be.
Meeting with, yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to do it, we need to do it.
Right.
First, yeah. Especially if it's going to have to do with the security and safety of the building and people.
Right. And this is all creates a waiting room for the kids to sit in, so we wouldn't have them in the lobby.
Yep.
Perfect.
You know, probably wishing they were not.
And that could be used as a lobby for even the attorney's office if, if possible, if that's something that we can agree on, because there's a door that goes back, you know?
It may does deal with a significant amount of very dangerous juveniles, everything from the kids who haven't done much to the very serious cases. They walk in and out, so I, I would agree on the security side.
Well, I think we've talked about it long enough, and I think that we need a motion to get the ball rolling once we get it done. They could win our project for them. So how soon till they can start?
Was this, just one last, this one, part of it, or is this? Did you have, is this money been appropriated yet?
It's ours.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's ours. This is stuff that we discussed right away in our.
Comes out of our courthouse.
Is it?
Okay, maybe I misunderstood.
This is something that we budgeted before, so.
Okay.
It's in there.
Well, it's in there then. So it's already appropriated.
Yep.
Need a motion, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
We've decided to move ahead with remodeling of the juvenile probation office. Estimated cost of thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. Yeah. It's got to be truly estimated.
That's. If we don't get to work on it, it might be twenty-three hundred eighty-one.
Well, housing markets dropped out, so now the yellow, yellow woods.
Half a floor that got destroyed, so. Anyway, moved the motion and seconded. Any further discussion?
I'd like to have Steve or Lee talk to me. And if we're just appropriating this much money at this time.
It's thirteen one eighty.
I
We don't need.
I hate it when people set something up to have something done, and then the people that really have to work with it, they're like, well, hey, this doesn't work for me, so I.
Deb was part of this meeting.
So that will be, I don't know. My other question is, because of the amount, does it have to be put up for a bid? You know, okay, perfect.
So we, what, basically, we need to have them meet with you so we don't have any change or.
Absolutely. All right. Pretty flexible my schedules. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks.
All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great.
I make sure it gets, you know, I just want to make sure.
Sign it.
Yeah, it's right.
Okay. Citizens input.
Right, I thought that was our.
Sure.
They could.
I was just going to lay guess another were fifty-one point oh three percent, which is sixteen million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, that was the end day yesterday.
What was that, fifty-one?
Fifty-one point zero three percent, taking in.
Fifty-one, that's total year's taxes, right? So we're, we're, we're over half of what we.
And there's still a lot of mail and data process, so I'm.
What is the looks to be driven this dollar now?
Sixteen million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty cents.
No, eight.
Even though you gotta spend eight million for this.
I was gonna say.
No, eight notes involved in any of them letters.
I submit our nature.
I guess. Go ahead.
All right, I love taking away, but I go over two hours to get here today, so I'm probably, you all, all, oh gee, we got money, we got a championship, and it's the pipeline thing. I just want to reiterate to the board the hazardous nature of this product. I really appreciate what you said earlier about giving everybody a fair shake, because some of us landlords don't think, like, we're getting a fair shake, because some of it sort of comes in holes over everything. But the, I, I have been researching this for a year, so we are certified by lawyers. And the product in the pipeline is not the same thing that puts the bubbles in the pump. It is a liquidized hazardous CO2. When it comes out of the ethanol plants, it gets converted under twenty-one hundred pounds pressure into a fluid state. And if the pipeline breaks in the process of converting back from a liquid to a gas, it, it makes a big plume. And studies have shown over and over again that that plume will stretch for a mile, maybe four miles, depending on what the wind is doing. And it hangs low to the ground and it's in this fixedness. They use this stuff to euthanize small, uh, small animals. And when we talk about setbacks, some of this recommend, originally was recommending the five hundred foot setback in residence. And that's not nearly enough, because this is instantaneous. So I just want you to be aware of that and take it very, very seriously that this is not like every other pipeline. This is just very serious stuff, and it comes out of the pipe so fast that the pipeline opens up like a zipper. It just opens up, it's spreading the stuff. It's, there, there's videos of it online. I think we may have sent that to, and we're just very concerned. And another thing, Asha, very, that's why I'm here today. Um, are you aware that there are going to be five pumping stations in the state of Iowa? And one of them is going to be in Crawford County. Are you aware of that?
No, we weren't aware of where everything was going to be.
Kay, Kaylee said no. When she was here, it would be in Crawford County. But it is, we, it's, it's on their official files. There are five counties in Iowa that will have a pumping station. And these will be above ground, probably four, five acres above ground. And to keep the pressure in the pipes stable. And they're going to have massive motors that are going to require massive amounts of electricity. Is your girl electric, ready to handle that? And if it is, how is this going to, if it isn't, how is this going to impact other customers on the line? It's serious stuff running now. You have to be aware of this when you start writing up the ordinance, because Crawford County is one of the five. And the reason I'm so upset is it's going to be two miles from our bar.
I figured this thing was going to be a bar.
No, two miles. It's going to be on the Vernon Boss Road. They, they're, the latest map, it just came out yesterday. I was going to print it out this morning. Uh, the latest map that they, uh, but some have filed, I think, it says pumping station. And it's on the Vernon Boss Road. We think it's on the Jack Crawford, but we're not sure. And that's two miles from our bar, and I'm talking about this hazardous stuff. Now I find out there's a pumping station back there, so I'm concerned. And that's why I give this up. I just wanted to make you aware, and I really appreciate what you said about giving everybody a fair shake, so. Here's one, see the book that you wrote yesterday?
Sure.
Yeah.
I need to have it for us.
This is exactly what Kaylin said, no, there won't be, I mean, it's.
I mean, but I'll take some pictures.
Thanks, Terry.
Does anybody else want to?
I don't like, I don't like true.
Thank you. Have a good day. I'll be in touch.
Thanks, Martha.
I just got that done last night. I did, I was sorry. My stuff.
You got a printer?
Anyway, I just want to make you what.
Thanks, Bonnie. You know.
We're not too late with everything, but I don't think we are.
No, not now.
Yeah.
If you, if you wait much longer. I guess I'll just do an FYI. I listened on Zoom meetings with Denver County Board of Supervisors this morning before I came here. And they had to, I was Zoom, they're talking about the ordinance. It's, I'm sure ours, our county attorneys are very good, but they also just signed up this one with you, too. So it might be worthwhile to get more.
I'll put our county attorneys up against her. Martha's.
Martha's also sharp. And ag law and all this kind of stuff is her, what she went to college for. We've, we've actually got an asset, but she'll, she'll, she'll go over that ordinance with a fine sheet.
If it's something she can't handle, she will definitely let us know.
But you don't know what you don't know.
Exactly.
But she will find out if she will.
Tool.
And if she.
We're giving her tools.
That she needs it. We would support that.
This is a new way to.
I'll just tell you, like, when we were doing the wind towers and stuff, I never, she had the answer all the time right there. I mean, that, she's sharp. Very sure.
And if we update the ordinance this weekend, I know that at the end of the wind towers, we were going to be proactive, so if we, after the gas, we can be one that.
No, it's, it's. There, we're finalizing all the stuff. That's got to be brought to the board. They had this, and the, the last big trial actually kind of interrupted some of that. That's, that's real close. We're still working on it. Board, we'd like it to most days, but got to give everybody a chance to do their part, otherwise it ends up in court and gets whooped on in.
Well, the one that'd be five of these pumping stations together is state of Iowa.
That's good to know.
They also make turbines sound like a crane dryer twenty-four seven.
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
Pumping stations sound like they're really dry, only twenty-four seven, so that's not fair to my neighbors there either.
Those neighbors have no say in it.
Right.
That's, that's another good point behind it all. The neighbors have no say. I was with the lady with the wind turbine that said, the guy across the, the road sold it to whoever, or put them, these minutes in for the turbine or let them have it. And then she said, I'm across the hall, I, or, or the road, I've got, you know, you might.
Then I speak on the handoff from our house, so I know about that.
Can I ask a question about?
No, I just want to make sure.
Is there an ordinance in place or one that could possibly be added to what you're working on, on a distance decibel level of a pumping station?
Oh, pumping station.
That way it would protect the neighbor from excessive noise that taken their piece that they have no say in.
And there's another part of using the Shelby County ordinance, which Shelby County won't have one, and if we're going to, then that's part of making sure that.
Yeah.
What was our decimal on the forty, forty-three?
Crawford County owns a decimal owner. Do you actually, you own it?
What's that? Forty-five?
Thought you gave it to the county.
Forty-five, yeah. Forty-five from, from the.
Forty-five from what distance?
I think a, a foundation.
Foundation of the.
Yeah, based on the height, you, you.
I don't think that we've changed that. I mean, that seems.
Well, we have to have a, kind of a. Disorderment, so.
Yeah, we have to have.
Because that's where the annoying part comes. Somebody got the money for it.
And I mean, there's ways that they can insulate their, their, their building. You, you don't have to stop it, but they can set up, instead of putting it in a tin building, they, you know, I'm just, I'm speaking apathetic, I don't know what they're building on it. They could put concrete structure on it, open slates on.
Are those enclosed?
Has anybody ever seen a picture of it?
I have no idea.
They can, but they can do whatever they need to do. I mean.
To fill within the ordinances.
Yeah. If they want to build it inside a building and bury it underground, I don't, with whatever they want to do.
Yeah.
You know? So I could put a grain there right next to your house and have the fan blowing in your window and apparently you can stop it.
It's logged on my program.
I have a description here of a pumping station. Each, each pumping station will be fenced in and contain up to four pumps driven by electric motors, an electrical building, an electrical substation, a pump shelter building, a communication, communications equipment, and a parking area for station personnel. The applicant will purchase electricity for its pump from pump stations from local power providers. It is anticipated that the installed horsepower will range between four thousand and six thousand horsepower, including a fully redundant hot spare pump and motor. Actual power use will range between two thousand and three thousand, requiring fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred kilowatt of electricity. Pump stations will use electricity for all pumps, lights, heating in buildings. Pump stations will be fully automated for unmanned operation. Remote start and stop sets, point controls, so on and so forth, will be installed at each location. The pipe entering and exiting the pump station sites will be located below grade. However, some of the piping within the station yard will be above ground. Backup power at the pump stations will consist of batteries to maintain the communications equipment uh, for communications between pump station and pump control and to provide lighting. If the local utility power is disrupted, backup power is not designated to keep the pumps operating, which begs the question, what happens to all of this stuff?
Might not operate.
In a blizzard or something. So that gives you some idea.
Imagine they got.
The scariest thing you said was some of that pipe will be above ground.
Yes, yes.
That puts a whole different swing.
Under redundancy on keeping those pumps operating in the.
Well, here's, we're, we're speculating that they don't have it programmed into their shutdown.
Which you could have probably answered.
You know, if it failed, power failure goes into a shutdown mode.
Till last night, it would be nine, it was in Crawford County, so. They, they made, they've had on the real down low about this since the beginning, but see, we got all these maps and they have little diamonds on it. Five little diamonds, and what are those little diamonds? Those are the pumping stations. And I'm like, boy, that looks close to my house. You know, I was right. We've been asking all along for clarification on those diamonds and, no, no, not in your county, nope, 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 nope. Everywhere we have, they are. And then yesterday, the map came out, the pumping station. So, I mean, it's just ethics behind it.
The other stations are Clay, Crawford, Hancock, Hardin, and Sue County. So I'm not, we're not fucking playing Clay County, too.
So we lucked out.
Yeah, John, got it.
Could they move that a few hundred feet?
If you go to the I, that is just half the map, because if you go to the I E B site, you can get the entire county.
You have to know that the diamonds are what.
Yeah.
But this one, I mean, they actually write.
Yeah, I see that, so.
So, I need to.
Maybe they only do that after they have seventy-five percent of people.
Of the mileage.
Yes, excuse me.
Can I ask another, no pipeline question? You're talking about the decimal. Who does that testing?
Decimal.
He does.
Who does?
He does.
Well, he's got a tester. I mean, Dwayne's got a, doesn't Dwayne have one, too?
I think she's asking if you did an ordinance, would that be part of the ordinance?
Well, doesn't know that. I'm off the pipeline. Actually, where I live, I live out by the Boyer Valley Plant, and it's this last night is so loud. Who would go out and test that to see if there, is there any ordinance in Crawford County?
I don't think we have an ordinance on that type of thing. We have one for the windmills. That's where we come up with this forty-five decimal.
You tell every farmer what he wants and what he doesn't want.
Okay, so there is no protection for.
I don't think so. I mean, I don't think.
You can go talk to them, and you can go talk to them and say, hey, can you?
Dirt it down.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
There's still, there's still a motion.
I did it a long time ago.
Second.
Signified by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
Did you get your haircut?
No, does it look like I do?
I told you, I can hook you up, hook you up. You won't need one for a while after that.
I stripped the haircut in July, and I skipped it since then. A reunion is this weekend, I mean, maybe.
I tell you, Dan, if I skip a two-week haircut, it drives me nuts, because it starts touching my ear.
So two weeks?
What, uh, what, what?
Two weeks? Every two weeks? He's making money.
Failed to find time.
I was gonna say, I'm surprised that you don't do that. I used to do it. When I was there, and I had it. I made a, I got that article. I made the point.